Well, good evening and welcome to the 2012 Scott County Board of Commissioners Debate. We welcome both the audience here in the lecture room at the Shakopee High School and those who are watching on television. We want to recognize the students of Shakopee Kids Voting and the students from Shakopee Public Schools who are here in the lecture hall this evening and thank them for their participation in tonight's event. And we want to thank all of you for your participation in our electoral process. My name is Brad O'Neil. I'm the pastor of Brookwood Community Church and I will be moderating tonight's debate. I'll be assisted this evening by Tim Watts, a student from Shakopee High School. Tonight's debate is being sponsored by the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau and by the Shakopee Public Schools. The views expressed in tonight's debate are those of the candidates, not those of the Chamber and Visitors Bureau or of the Shakopee Public Schools. The Chamber and Visitors Bureau and Shakopee Public Schools are sponsoring this debate as a service to the community and have gone to great lengths to ensure their objectivity in this forum. All the candidates who have filed to run for the Board of Commissioners and can demonstrate evidence of a campaign were invited to tonight's debate. Candidates have been seated in alphabetical order by the district seat for which they are running. Candidates are going to be asked questions to which they will be given one minute to respond. In some cases, their opponents will be given 30 seconds for rebuttal. As moderator, I'll have an opportunity to ask follow-up questions in which case the candidates will have 30 seconds for their response. Our candidates are, for District One, Mr. Jerry Cuchara and Commissioner Joe Wagner. For District Two, our candidates are Mr. Brent Lawrence and Commissioner Tom Wolfe. For District Three, our candidates are Ms. Deb Barber and Commissioner Dave Mendon. For District Four, our candidate is Commissioner Barbara Marshall. And for District Five, our candidate is Commissioner John Ulrich. Our first question this evening will be asked of all of our candidates. Candidates, if elected, what goals do you have for your term? And we'll begin with Mr. Cuchara.
I'd like to thank, first of all, the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau for holding this debate, this forum. And things I'd like to see done during my term. I believe the county does such a good job of delivering some of the services. I think they could do even better if they had a board that was not always in agreement, but rather cooperative and collaborative and respectful with each other. I don't see that at all. And I also don't see the board, at least the majority of them, not all of them, being respectful and working well with the county administration. I would change that. To get along, to work with each other, we have to be respectful. I would be respectful. I know how to build relationships. I know how to communicate. I know how to be a good listener. I'd ask for that opportunity.
Commissioner Wagner. If elected, what goals do you have for your term?
Just continue with good, conservative, responsive, local, local government. This is, as they often say, an invisible layer of government, but it's the one that really affects people's day-to-day lives. If you have an elderly parent, things of this nature. And just continue in that course. Good, conservative, and passionate county government. Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence.
And I would also like to thank the Chamber for making this evening a possibility for all of us. I've become very concerned about how the county board is handling certain situations. I've watched the county board for a number of years and have been a resident of District Two for 23 years. I would like to bring honesty and integrity back to the county board. I am a proven leader, a very good decision-maker. I have experience in governmental situations. The county is a big provider of services to townships, and I've been in a township government for almost the last five years or so. If elected, honesty, integrity, collaboration, that to the county board. Thank you.
Commissioner Wolfe.
The big thing is, for a lot of people, is maintaining the tax rate, or lower it, as most people would like to see. Minimizing ordinances that obstruct people getting and doing business in Scott County. Roads are a big issue. Getting people to and from work, into school, into their families across the river is a big thing. Bringing business and commerce in here, that's something I've been working on here for the last couple of years, and that'll help with our tax base. Thank you.
Ms. Barber.
Again, I would like to thank everyone as well for joining us here tonight. Thank the Chamber and the school districts for hosting this fabulous event. There are several goals I'd like to accomplish should I be elected. The first, I think, was echoed by several people down here, so I'd like to help restore trust in the county board. Part of that is by improving the dynamic at the county board level, both among the group themselves, among the county, out with the county staff, and also with the citizens that we represent. I also would like to be a strong representative for Shakopee itself. I think this district that I serve is District Three, which is the only one, that's all within the city limits of Shakopee, and it has its own needs, and I think it may need that voice for the Shakopee of today. And then I also think we need to start focusing on our strategic plan for the future. To date of the last few years, due to a number of circumstances, we've had to be very reactive as a county. And what I would like to see is more of a shift towards proactive planning, especially in the areas of roads and economic development.
Commissioner Mendon.
Thanks to the Chamber and everybody else that showed up. And I think they probably want to get the presidential debate tonight or watch that and sit. But one thing I think is real important is, you'll hear me saying, you've got to lower taxes, you've got to get less government. Government is getting way too big, taxes are too high. A lot of people hurt out there. And raising taxes is not the answer. I think in ways we do that, and I think, you know, the county is well underway in doing that, and that's the collaboration. We've got to find more things that we can collaborate, whether it's a city, a county, or private enterprise out there, and just run government a lot more efficiently. And one thing that we definitely got to continue, and I think we do quite well, is constantly work with the townships, cities, school districts, school community, and I think we do that through that organization called SCALE, et cetera. It seems like if we all get together, we can save money and come up with a lot more resources and ideas. And one thing I like to do is, and a lot of times how we do all this, come up with better ideas, all of the...
Great time. Commissioner Marshall.
Thank you, and thank you to the Chamber for inviting us tonight to communicate with you and to stay in touch with our citizens through the Chamber and through our businesses. One of the things that I have on my top priority list, as one of the co-chairs of the Meth Task Force, we have a significant problem with heroin in our community. It has increased significantly within the last couple of years. In 2005, the Meth Task Force was formed to address the same issue with meth and pedi. And in addition to the heroin impact not only on our youth and families in the community, serious burglaries have risen 127 percent. The use of heroin, 180 percent, in our community. That's a significant issue. Second is to continue the partnerships and collaboration with other counties and with cities to maintain ultimate service delivery methods, because it's a way to keep our tax levy flat, which we've been able to do for the last three years. And then to maintain the infrastructure that we've already paid for to make sure that it does not deteriorate in the near future.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and join us. Since I've been a commissioner, I've really worked with two organizations. One is called FISH, Families and Individuals Sharing Hope, and SCALE, Scott County Association for Leadership Efficiency. Both of these organizations could be national models in how to partner together to get things done and work cost-efficient, partner together, collaborate, and further the mission of Scott County, and do it in a way that costs less to the taxpayer. And so I've been working with that. I've been a founding member of both FISH and SCALE, and have been a chair, past chair, another chair of FISH. And we're really seeing great successes. We've partnered together and collaborated and used our resources to improve the research community, so I want to continue working on that.
Well, for our second question, several of you have mentioned the inner workings of the board. If elected, what specifically will you do to improve the inner workings of the board? And our question begins with Mr. Lawrence.
Well, I think the first thing I would do would be bring the open forum back to the council meeting. I think it's important to hear what the residents are saying, no matter what comment they want to make, even at election time. I know that there's been some comments, certain individuals have gotten up and wanted to say something. I think if you're an elected official, people have every right to ask you any question that they want to. And as an elected official, you have to be held to a higher standard. I think some of the things that have gone on, the way that people have been treated when they get up to make a statement, and the gavel drops and they're told this, that down brutally is unacceptable for an elected official, and when elected, I would make sure that that does not happen. Thank you.
Commissioner Wolfe.
You know, the workings of the board, I think, are fine. You know, there's some disagreements amongst us, but we're all elected here to do a job for the county, and sometimes we see it as doing things differently than one another. Today, I thought we had a great, real productive meeting. You know, before the meeting, we were telling jokes and stuff. I think the board's inner workings are just fine. To comment on the public comment, people can come up and make comments anytime they want to. But when you're going to march people up there at taxpayer expense, taxpayer-funded cameras to promote candidates or certain statements, I don't think that's not our role in government. I think it's meant for the county business, and that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Barber.
I do think, at least from the public perspective, from somebody who is watching the workings of the board, it could be improved. The key is having a respectful dialogue among each other, being willing to ask tough questions, but also be able to listen to the answers, whether you like them or not. And the goal is to try and find some consensus. We're all from different districts. We're going to have different ideas and different thoughts of what should be done and how it should be done, which is why we're split into districts. But it can be done in a respectful, thoughtful manner that actually makes things more efficient for people on them.
Commissioner Mendon.
One thing that I like in the county business before I came here and get ready for this, with all these advisory groups we have, I think it's close to 50, 60 of them. And to me, they are the people that, they're all, yeah, pretty much the citizens. They're pretty much are the ones that I think set the direction for the priorities for the county, whether it's the justice, whether it's the task force, or whether it's the FISH or SCALE, you know, it goes on and on and on. And I think, I really do think, I mean, a lot of them are part of it, you know, also on quite a few of these. And let them set the direction, and they come up with the priorities, what they think is right. So I definitely want to promote that as much as possible. And then FISH, like John said, that concept of people helping people, government take the back burner, I like that. I could even mention it if you want.
Commissioner Marshall.
Thank you. I think there's a couple of statements I'd like to make. First of all, anybody that thinks that we are operating well is looking at the world through a world's coat of glasses, because communication is the key. And to communicate the opinions that we have and ask people to come and talk to us, we can't do that and then cut off input. So that's one thing. I think that if we look at the facts, we look at fairness, we look at common sense when we talk about the issues, that is first and foremost. There is a learning curve to this job, because we deal with a lot of aspects of county government. People who come on with little or no experience of the county need to accept that they may not know everything there is to know yet about Scott County and how the county government works. And there's nothing wrong with that, because we all start at some point as a new person. But to assume that we know all the answers and that we have not tried certain things in the past, and therefore it's a new idea, and therefore we should continue down the same path or a new path, it's all communication. We need to talk to each other and be aware of what we need.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Remember, talking to our former county administrator, Lee LaMonte, about what had been going on in the county, and I remember saying to him, you know, all the things I've done as a county commissioner, I'm most proud of the fact that I stood up and fought for Gary Shulman. There were 29 pages of allegations that were leveled against him, and there was a secret petty agenda by the three commissioners. They violated the old opinion law, they worked behind the scenes, and they roped in a county staff person, and it was a mess. Star Tribune referred it as being a circus in Scott County. And I have to say, I apologize that we gave the pressure to politics, it's usual, but I want to let you know that I'm proud that I fought for Gary Shulman. I'd do it again. And if I see this kind of action again, I'll fight again. And I'd like to see much better relations, but sometimes you've just got to stand up and fight.
Mr. Cuchara.
I believe some of the problems with the inner workings of the board, it leads to the way the question was, is there's a lack of trust and respect. And now that I've had some time to think about my goals, I would like to return that trust and respect to the board by being a full-time commissioner and participate in all of my committee assignments. So the first district, for the first time in 14 years, we have a representative at the committee assignments that are handed out. Everyone has to hold their weight on the board, otherwise the rest of the board has to do more work. At the committee, commissioner reports, 98, 99 percent of the time, our current commissioner says nothing to report, which translates, and I have done nothing. I have been to no committees, I have been to none of my committee assignments. That would change. That would change us meeting.
Commissioner Wagner.
If everything my opponent, Mr. Cuchara, said was true, then I don't do anything, I would never be here as long as I am now. You can't trick, you can't fool the people in District One. They are very much, they know each other, they talk to each other. If Wagner was truly not doing his job, I wouldn't be here. And as for the dynamics on the board, you have five very different personalities on this board. This is the way it works. We're very passionate about our districts, and what we feel is right for our districts. That's what happens when you get five people. And it's simply the dynamics of it. If you think we're so dysfunctional, I invited Shannon Beck to come on onto one of our tour buses. There's nobody fighting, there's nobody arguing. We sat down, like Commissioner Ulrich said at the beginning of the last meeting here last Tuesday, and we were arguing about the fact that I was charging too much for the pumpkins I had in front of my brother's store. Does that sound like somebody who's fighting? No, we get along just fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. We even talked about you here. Our third question is actually going to be asked by a high school student, Tim Watts. He comes from Shakopee High School, and he will ask a question.
Creating more jobs seems to be a campaign issue at every level this year. How can Scott County Board bring more jobs to Scott County?
For this question, we'll begin with Ms. Barber.
Absolutely. Economic development is something that's very important to me. I'm a business owner myself, and serve on the economic development and advisory board for the city of Shakopee. What happened here in Scott County is we had a number of people come during the big population growth, and right about that same time is when the recession hit, so the economic growth that typically follows something like that didn't occur. Now, one of the things I think we need to do is start looking up to try and expand economic development again. One great step that's been taking place right now, and a credit to the current board, is the First Stop Shop, which is also a credit to SCALE, which is a way to try and bring economic development into the area. Economic development brings jobs, it helps reduce residential tax base, and can be good for everybody if done right.
Commissioner Mendon.
I think one thing that we have to do, we can't keep raising commercial taxes. I have three people that I know very well that have businesses, and I check with them. And one of their, one of those people, his taxes went $10,000 in the last five years. It's probably not that much, some people say, but to him, it's a lot. And there's another person, his taxes went from 36 to 60-some thousand dollars a year. And another person, and this person worked hard all his life to get this business, he rents out these buildings out, and now it's his retirement, and this went from $10,000 to $34,000. And I laugh when we talk about economic development. Who are we kidding? If we keep raising taxes like that, you can't expect a business to try to improve their building. That just gives government a green light to raise more taxes or to hire someone. And we have to lower them taxes. We have to reduce government, we have to lower taxes, and so these people can, you know, want to invest in their business.
Commissioner Marshall.
Thank you. I will also mention the First Stop Shop that Debbie's earlier mentioned. It is basically a clearinghouse for all the cities to look at the land that they have available for infrastructure and for industrial opportunities, to attract businesses here who not only want to set up their business here, but who have good paying jobs, jobs that really can support individuals and families and not have to work two or three jobs. We work with the cities to not only support them, but also to encourage the economic development, because the cities really are the ones who make the final decision. There are tools out there like TIP, Tax and Commit Financing, or ABATMENTS, that encourage or allow some incentives for companies who want to come here and set up their business. Whatever we can do to encourage that and to provide infrastructure for the businesses that want to locate here. It's very important, because they're all factors that companies look at when they come or want to come and spend on.
Commissioner Ulrich.
I'll, I mean, four approaches to this. One is we're funding Greater MSP, which is an organization to bring jobs into the region, in the Twin Cities region, so we're funding that, we're part of it. That's one step. Another step is the First Stop Shop. That takes warm leads, helps the city land those leads, leads to jobs coming to our region. Another thing we want to be is business-friendly. We want to streamline our processes, our ordinances, make it easier to develop. And finally, we want to make sure that they have the infrastructure to service these businesses. I led the debate for the 494-169 interchange for funding that, and that was funded, that led to 500 new jobs come to Scott. So that's four items I like for bringing jobs.
Mr. Cuchara.
I believe one of the goals the county has is to, well, more people in Scott County have jobs in Scott County. I understand that currently only 25 percent of Scott County residents work in the county. A full 44 percent are going to Hennepin County. If we had made it easier for businesses to come here with the First Stop Shop, perhaps ease regulations, perhaps do some tax increment financing, reduce the commercial tax base, we'd find that people would have more opportunities. Along with that, we have to help the roads. So instead of people taking the roads out of the county, they could take the roads home and be in the house for supper, if they were able to find a job close to their, close to their home. Chart in New Prague has done a good job of working with the city of New Prague, working with the county, they're going to get 80 welding jobs. I won't be applying for one of them, I'm not, but I respect those of you.
Commissioner Wagner.
Yes, just going to what Jerry mentioned, the way that's a classic example of Scott County working with the city of New Prague, with other businesses, with Chart coming there. There are 80 jobs, and they're averaging something like $18 an hour with the full benefit package, and this wonderful employment opportunities, and really being, just being developer-friendly. And Scott County, you know, just being receptive. What can I do to help you? And when they say questions like that, there are things with the ABATMENTS and things like that, you can encourage it. We have got a wonderful place here in Scott County. And again, we need to, we need to keep more of these people here, instead of taking the county roads out. Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence. I think I'll be the eighth or ninth person to talk about the First Stop Shop, and it's an excellent idea coming to fruition through the Scott County Community Development Agency. Information that businesses need is very, very important. And when somebody's looking at relocating or maybe expanding a business location in another area, they want information, they want it from one source, and they want it from a good source. In a previous life, when I worked for a major publishing firm during the retail explosion in the 80s, we were actually presenting a lot of that information, and they want one source, they want all of the information, they want it right away, and I think this is one thing that's going to be done there. Talking about transportation too, another river crossing might help. We need better east-west, north-south transportation in terms of infrastructure in Scott County. And finally, the Chart announcement in the Star Tribune today with 80 jobs in New Prague is absolutely wonderful. We had an announcement a month or so ago that the MyPillow Company was relocating from Chaska to Shakopee, and that's great news as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Wolfe.
Before even the First Stop Shop, about two, three years ago, I think most of us commissioners were there. We had this, this I task a project, and it's turned kind of into the Greater Minneapolis where we've hooked on, and it was something that we would have taken the blame or shared the credit for if businesses came. And now we have Chart, and we have Five Star, the Pillow Company, and there's others online that I can't mention here. But the one thing that they look at is infrastructure, or two things, infrastructure and taxes. Can they get around? Can they move their products? And is it going to be feasible? And that's, that's how we get business here. Thank you.
For our next series of questions, we're actually going to ask some questions specific to your district, and we'll begin with a question for District Four and Commissioner Marshall. And you've mentioned already your work on the Meth Task Force. What can Scott County do to combat meth and heroin use?
In 2005, we were looking at the numbers of how many cases were coming through our courts and also to the county attorney's office that were either directly or indirectly related to meth, and they were significant. So we formed the task force not only for education, but for prevention. So we've been in the schools with crime theater in the middle school age bracket, also some opportunities in the high schools. We make that all schools throughout Scott County, and we saw a significant leveling off or decrease in the number of meth cases. So that has stabilized somewhat, but now within the last probably six months, that's going up again. We debated changing the name of the Meth Task Force to include heroin, which we do in the education case in the schools. The heroin cases have been significantly increasing, 180 percent increase. The burglaries have gone up, almost 130 percent. People who need to steal to support their habits. So the continued efforts for education and prevention are the key. How we do that depends on what schools will accept, what communities will accept as an intervention, and going into the schools to really get the message out. When you look at meth, they have, people who are meth addicts have physical appearances that change. And so it really was a good opportunity to show the pictures of meth addicts to the kids who said, wow. And so that would really...
Our next question is for District Five. Commissioner Ulrich, you had mentioned the organization Families and Individuals Sharing Hope, or FISH. What role do you see for FISH in providing services to Scott County residents?
Well, FISH is a partnership of five entities, the faith unit, and nonprofits, service groups, local government, and business. We partner together to meet human need. And so we have about 350 partners so far throughout the whole county that needs go out to this network, go out in email, partners respond, and these needs are met lightning quick. We like to say that we meet real needs right now. And as we're meeting needs, it's those partners, it's the community coming together to meet need. It's not government, it's not one entity trying to meet all the needs, where they have sort of a synergy, we can do more together. And so they've just been extremely successful in that. And also, we're beginning to promote the ways that each of these partners provide programs and services or ministries, we're making those known also to the partners, because often cases, each partner doesn't know what the other partner officer is doing, so we're providing information as well.
Now, as we move to District One, we'll begin with Commissioner Wagner. What impact do you see frac sand lining having on the roads, environment, and economy of Scott County?
The frac sand, it would be the Great Plains, a one that just is in the process of the finals of the permitting process. That particular project, the county has been very stringent with their regulations. This company, Great Plains, has been working with the county now, I think for about two years, to get the final permitting process. Most of the product is going out by rail. And if they, if they keep the sand, you know, covered, keep it damp, the issue of dust, et cetera, should not be an issue. I supported it only after the two adjoining townships, St. Lawrence and, excuse me, I'm so sorry, Sand Creek and Louisville, supported the, supported the project. And to me, being on the county board, if the township board supports it and feels comfortable with it, that's grassroots government there, and I can support it too. Thank you.
Mr. Cuchara, same question. What impact do you see frac sand lining having on the roads, environment, and economy of Scott County?
Prayerfully and hopefully, I'm not sure that's going to be reality, though. Star Tribune does a wonderful job of outlining and reporting on some of the concerns that Winona's having with their frac sand issue. Winona is having with their frac sand issue, that Wisconsin is having. When I was out in the townships, Louisville and Sand Creek, St. Lawrence as well, but it wasn't mentioned, the frac sand was on people's minds. They're concerned about the water table, they're concerned about the airborne dust. And when some of these were brought up to the county board, our current commissioner indicated that, yes, they've gone through some studies, and he almost feels sorry for the mining company. I don't feel sorry for the mining company, I'm going to feel sorry for the residents of Scott County we run into problems with because of the frac sand issue.
Very good. As we move to District Two now, we'll begin with Commissioner Wolf. How would you describe intergovernmental relations between the Scott County Board and the Shockepi and Waukatoon Sioux community? And what are the biggest issues in that relationship?
I would describe the relationship as very good at this point. The new chairman and I and our administrator have met at least a half dozen times already at this point in the last month or so here. Charlie Vega is the new chair. He shows up for everything, he's involved in everything, and knows that we have to partner together. I think Stanley Crooks, when he was the chair, he saw issues, and he was the right chairperson at the right time for them. We had some differences at the time, a lot of it has to do, almost all of it has to do with taking land off the tax rolls and putting it into trust. And that costs taxpayers in Scott County money when that happens. I oppose that. They would like to put more land into trust, and that's their deal, so that's where the bad ground is. But other than that, they've helped us with parks, they've helped with lights into ballfields, they've helped with roads, they've been a real good partner, and I think they, I look forward to working with them.
Mr. Lawrence, same question.
The tribe has a wonderful operation, Mr. Lawrence. And they are the largest employer in Scott County. Appears that any time anyone asks for help from them, and someone needs, I'll give you an example. At a recent scale meeting, I had the opportunity to sit next to Charlie Vick and Bill Admity, and the FISH presentation was going on, and they mentioned that they needed a representative from a business to go in. And they both looked at each other, and they were shaking their head and giving every indication that they wanted to get involved very heavily with FISH. And that is one thing that the Shockepi Sioux community does very well, is gives back to the community, largest employer. I think we need a better understanding of their situation. I don't know if the local schools have much studies in terms of what has happened with their tribe and that situation, but I think if that were incorporated, it would give everyone a better understanding of that. Thank you.
Now, as we move to District Three, we want to discuss the 101 bridge. And in some ways, the question is very simple. Do you support raising the 101 bridge over the Minnesota River? But just to keep in mind as a follow-up already, if you do, how would you respond to people who are concerned about potentially closing the bridge for six to nine months? And Commissioner Madden, we'll begin with you.
Well, I definitely, you know, think that this is something we have to, I haven't mentioned any here, Claire Rowling, I was talking to her the other day, and she told me she has some influence, you have to get us a little bit more money so that Garber and Scott and maybe Shaq, we have a Shaq, I'm sure Shaq would give some of that or not, but, you know, we have to come up with the balance of the money. And the deal is, and I'm going to have to give Mr. Beer your credit for his pitch, but is, you know, what they do is make it a four lane, which I agree, I mean, and for the extra, two lanes and four lanes, it's a lot of money, but not that much money considered. And so, you know, they would do two lanes, traffic would stay, we'd be able to go back and forth, then do the other two lanes if they do the four lane. And I just hope, come up with the other extra money, and it becomes reality within the next couple of years. I think it's looking good.
Ms. Barber.
Actually, I agree with Commissioner, I think it's the biggest road issue right now facing Shockepi. I live in the old part of Shockepi, and it gets very challenging whenever that road gets flooded, which is, we all know, is often, and sometimes more than once a year. So it's very critical that we not only make it so it's a little more floodproof, but also make it four lanes, which will actually hopefully provide another outlet out of the city, which should overall improve traffic flow. Now, as far as six to nine month road closure, we've all survived the floods and having to go around. And although that's not an answer anybody would want to hear, it is really the reality that will still get us to some long-term benefit. One thing that we did last time when there was flooding was an additional lane was added on 169, and that might be something that we could do because that was very, very efficient to anyone who remembers that event, it made things much easier.
Our next question is going to go to our incumbents, and we'll begin with this question with Commissioner Ulrich. This year, the media has reported extensively on an investigation by the board into the conduct of county administrator Gary Shelton. What was your individual role in that process?
I learned of this sometime in late part of last year. My role was in to call people in the community, community leaders, mayors, council members, administrators, TOS officials, and say, if you thought Gary Shelton has done a great job, would you call the board members, the three or the behind the circle, would you talk to them and tell them how a better job you think Gary Shelton's done? Like to ask here, give me some names of people that you think don't like you, think you've done a bad job. Give me some opponents. And even when I called those opponents, they said, oh, I like Gary, I would never support that kind of action. So out of that action, those people did call and were backed away as a result of the pressure that was placed on, from the community. And that's the only reason this was forwarded, the only reason.
Commissioner Marshall.
Thank you, this has been a tough issue, and I'm sure anybody who reads the paper or watches our board meetings can testify to. Commissioner Wolf was our board chair this past year, and last July, not this past July, but the one before, he came to me and said that Commissioner Wagner and Madden had been talking to him.
Or it wasn't July, it was November.
That they had been talking to him about replacing Gary Shelton, and I asked him why. This man has had various roles in the county, he has done a fabulous job in all of them. He has brought us through this economic crisis in a way that most administrators could not. I've worked with various administrators throughout the state, and I saw absolutely no reason for this to be happening. Then I didn't care much about it until the end of the year, and then I heard that this investigation was going to be taking place. During the whole time, I saw that the morale was decreasing, the productivity was decreasing, and we incurred over $43,000 in legal fees because of this. So as a citizen and as a commissioner, that should never have happened.
Commissioner Madden.
I worked with Gary way back, and I worked a lot more, so I know the sheriff's office. And my lawyer mentioned one negative thing, and I'm done with him, as far as negativity. But anyway, one thing he did was, we did home monitoring for our prisoners. We had a chance to make 20 bucks for everyone that was on home monitoring, so I wanted to make that money for the sheriff's office. And Gary came in, and he was the head of the jail there, and he did a start of his own private business with another guy there, and very well. And they did this a lot through county time, and he started, he got a multimillion dollar business on it, which he still runs, and which makes me mad because it was mine, I should have been going to the county. And not only that, but right now, I mean, he's supposed to be our county administrator full-time. And, you know, he should either do one or the other, either his multimillion dollar business or this. And I got a lot more of it. I mean, but I'm thinking positive, you can still work with a person that you don't necessarily be expecting it long, and I think we do that every day, all of us. And I do...
Commissioner Wolf.
In November, middle of November, at the reorganization meeting, our commission, I called Barb that night and just said, there's an employee that's leveling some charges against Mr. Shelton. And I also asked her about, you know, why she was dishing off a bunch of her committee assignments, and it was because she was taking on a cap agency job, which I was shocked to hear that she's going to have two government positions. But I gathered all the information, as I stated. An employee filed charges, and they can do that, they can insist on things, and it did cost $43,000, but it had to go through a process, that's what it did, and that's where it's at, it's done. Thank you.
Commissioner Wagner.
With different issues with our administrator, I was very upfront with them. There was a meeting, I think it was towards the end of November, Commissioner Wolf was there, the county attorney was there, I was there, Gary Shelton was there. And the meeting lasted about an hour. And at the end of it, I just slowly, I stood up and I just listed my issues that I had. I didn't like the, I didn't like the side business that he had going on. I don't think it's appropriate for the county attorney and the county administrator to be involved in a privately held hearing aid company and getting the rest of the county employees involved in buying shares of this. I mean, there's tens of thousands of dollars that the employees have invested in this company, as privately held, with everyone hoping that it's going to go public and make all this money. But what happens if it doesn't go public? And I asked you all of it, and I just said, first organizational meeting, I'm going to make a motion, I think we need a new administrator. And we'll see how the votes go, we'll let it go from there. That was it.
Yes, Commissioner Marshall.
Commissioner Wolf seems to disagree with my timeframe, and I will repeat that it was July, because in August, we did Gary Shelton review. We gave him an outstanding rating. Nothing was said about the conversation from the previous month, so I thought that she was dead. So I go back that it was July. Second, dishing out my assignments, I took, I asked that they take two because it didn't work for my timeframe. I took three instead of the two that I got rid of. And second, my second job is not a government job. So I just want to clarify for the record, because this has been going on, floating for months. It's not true.
Commissioner Wolf, would you give care of the son?
I maintain, I talked to Barb, I believe it was November 15, and the cap agency, while it may not be a governmental, it gets money, there are some dollars that float in there from the government, and even if it's just $1, it's a government agency, I'm sorry, but it has to be public for you.
Commissioner Ulrich.
I'm going to use my own vote. On September 19, the investigator stated that Tom Wolf went to the employee and said, three commissioners, the commissioners want to fire Gary Shelton, would you help us? That was the testimony on March 20 by the investigator. Investigator investigated 29 pages of allegations that these guys trumped up with the employee, and none of them were substantiated, including ones you've heard tonight, none were substantiated. We've gone from a model of collaboration, cooperation, working together, that was heavy of the Twin Cities, to what the Star Tribune has called a circus. Can you complicate the sense of it even here tonight?
Commissioner Madden, very sorry.
I just like to clarify that. One thing is that when that employee came up with that complaint, to this day, I never got a copy of it, I met with our relations personnel director, and I says, I'm his boss, I have a right to see what the complaint was. No, you can't. To this day, I've never seen that complaint, so that's not true. Also, I want to say one thing, when we got the open meeting law, you know, we can't discuss this stuff behind the scenes. And I just want to say that 95% of the stuff that we approved, we all agreed to, and it's just these things that we don't, and the news media loves it, because, you know, if you have a disagreement, they can make it look like it's a fistfight. I don't care who has a meeting with people, whether it's a private sector, whatever.
How many is the second?
Okay, Commissioner Ulrich.
I have taped here tonight, for anybody who listened, admission of a violation of the open meeting law, Dave Madden. Well, he says on tape, I said, you know anything about what's going on with Gary Shelton? He goes, yeah, I do. I said, he said, I've talked to Wagner and Wolf, and I got to tell you, I agree with them.
I've never talked to him together.
When you come to an agreement, apart from board meetings, that's a violation of the open meeting law, that's what he says on tape, I have it here tonight, if anybody wants to listen to that.
I wonder if there'll be 30 seconds to follow up.
Okay, right now?
Yes.
That's a lie. And I'll tell you what the open meeting violation was, was that I didn't know which way Tom Wolf was going to vote that day. I'll guarantee you, the county attorney and these three people knew which way they were going to vote, because our county administrator, our county attorney said, don't be involved today. I'm like, why? Why can't we discuss this?
Well, we'll move on then now to our challengers. Challengers, this question will go to each of you in turn. Do you believe that Scott County's levy is appropriate at its current rate? If not, what are specific expenses you would change? And we will begin with Ms. Barber.
I actually do, the levy at this point, I think, is appropriate. It's a challenging time, you don't want to raise taxes additionally, but if you look at the cost-cutting measures that have been implemented over the last few years, and then for us to go through that process and then come back this year with a preliminary levy that actually reduces taxes for the majority of people in Scott County, and specifically for our district, it's over 98% of the people will save their property taxes from the county, either stay the same or be reduced. I think that's extraordinary. So I think at this particular point, it is appropriate at the level it's at. And I think what they're looking to do for those levy for next year makes a lot of sense.
And Ms. Lawrence.
I would have to agree with Ms. Barber. I think the levy probably is appropriate. I do think though, when there is an increase, even as small as that increase was, residents look at that and say, well, taxes are raised again. And I think if there's any way you can hold that levy, there's probably some dollars someplace that you can account for and to keep that flat. I'm very proud of the Fred River Township. We did have a levy increase a couple of years ago because we had some problems with infrastructure and needing to build some dollars up for that, but we have held the levy in Fred River for the last two years, and I think if there's a way to hold that, it's much more saleable to the residents, the residents feel better about it, and they feel much more confident that their elected officials are doing what's necessary to make it easier for them to live and stay in their homes. Thank you.
Mr. Kachara.
It's a difficult thing for me to answer, not having examined, I'm not scurrying the question, but I'm reading something. Without actually examining the budget line by line, I can't honestly say the levy is appropriate. But neither can the incumbent, because he skipped the budget workshop for 2013 and just showed up before being voted in. So neither one of us can actually answer that, but what I would like to do as a commissioner is spend time with a budget analysis line by line. I think we could find some ways to cut expenses instead of just keeping the employees' wages stagnant. Perhaps we could hold off on buying additional parkland and adding that, and taking it off the tax rules. Parkland, we can't even manage now, we can't run the ones we have. So no, I would like to say it's appropriate, I would like to say, yes, the people who were at the budget workshop did their due diligence, however, I can't...
Mr. Wagner, you were mentioned by me, I'll give you 30 seconds to respond.
Thank you. I was talking with Debbie earlier, and I said, one of the issues that I have being a county commissioner is that I'm also a funeral director, and it's unfortunate, but I can't schedule one unfortunately when people die. I missed that workshop at the last minute of driving to the, of course, driving to the workshop was when I got the death call, and I have to do what I have to do. I talked to Commissioner Wolf at great length as to what was covered during that workshop, and I felt I gave a very informed decision.
This next question will actually go to all of our candidates this evening, and the question is, what is the solution to the daily traffic snarl for commuters? And for this question, we're going to begin with Commissioner Wagner.
Excuse me.
What is the solution to the daily traffic snarl for commuters?
What is the solution? You know, I guess, what we talked about a little bit earlier, about half an hour ago, was try to keep more jobs, good jobs here in Scott County, obviously, that would be the number one thing, you know, because the problem, come, we try to get across the river for the most part, people commute pretty easily inside of this beltway here. And unfortunately, I really don't believe we can build our way out of Concession, I don't think that's possible. Things like the Danny Hecker building, to try to get more people riding together, more buses, et cetera, that way. But I think the biggest thing is just try to economic development in Scott County. Thank you.
Well, as a follow-up, what additional mass transit investment does Scott County need?
What other...
What additional mass transit investment does Scott County need?
Well, you know, like I say, we have the park and ride situations, and I think we're doing a good job. I mean, we can always do more. We need to develop, obviously, we've got the Danny Hecker building, you know, up and running and everything, but I think we're doing, just keep working on what we're doing right now.
Mr. Lawrence, same question. What is the solution to the daily traffic snarl for commuters?
That's a really tough question, because I think for the most part, people like to drive by themselves, they have things to do after work, certain, their children or childcare need to be picked up. But we need some infrastructure. It was interesting, when the bridge in Shockepi was closed and the 169 bridge went to more lanes, there wasn't much of a traffic problem in terms of monitoring, advocating what it was on the radio, so you may need more lane there. I also think through Met Council, and this is a possibility at some point... I also think through Met Council, and this is a possibility at some point, we're going to have the southwest corridor going through the southwest portion of Hennepin County. Is there a possibility that we can see rail in Scott County? I know there's a dam patch line that no one's supposed to be, no one's supposed to talk about supposedly. You know, supposed to talk about the dam patch line. That's our Met Council apparently that that's coming from. But I think the idea of light rail is a possibility and a possibility of extending that from the southwest corridor.
So just to clarify that with the follow up about mass transit, you would advocate a dam patch line and/or an additional lane over, over on 169 or whatever?
I think, I think both are possibilities. It seemed to solve the problem during the flood situation when all of that traffic continued to have to move east.
Commissioner Wolf, for you, what is the solution to the daily traffic snarl for commuters?
I, well, I, first of all, I don't, I don't believe rail is the answer. I think it's expensive, you know, what's going in downtown around there, it's, it's awful expensive per ride there. And no matter what solution, I'm on an I-35 solutions committee, we look at solutions and different things all the time. And no matter what you do with the 13 bridge there, coming across from 101, if you plug a hole or make it easier for someone to get to or from one spot, it's going to plug up somewhere else. And, but I do support buses, I support the parking ride, we go from the Danny Hecker and the one on 16 and 21. Buses can go on just about any single road in the state, so thank you.
So then in, in answer to the follow up, your answer would be that we are making the appropriate investment right now in buses?
We're making, if we can get the 101 bridge fixed up there because 35, the bridge there is scheduled to be replaced or repaired in eight, 10 years. And if that closes down, we're going to need a reliever. And so 101, if we got flooded, that would be it.
Ms. Barber.
Well, I agree that at this point, I think that there are congestion issues and they will likely continue to a certain extent. It will help with the opening of the interchange that 494 and 169. But soon it's going to be, the backups are going to start to put it down. You already see that happening at 21 and 169. Now, those are state roads, but so what can the county or themselves do is they can certainly advocate for their community, to the Met Council, to their state legislature to try and improve that situation. As far as transit, I think really the focus right now should be more on the bus systems and the park and ride. Speaking with county staff, with the expertise in this area, with the three stations, the South Bridge and Eagle Creek and the Danny Hecker Station, those three should satisfy our requirements at least for 2025, which is fabulous. But that doesn't mean I think we should take our eye off the ball to look for new opportunities and new ways to help improve mass transit for people going outside of the county. I very much agree with the comment about economic development, as many people as we can keep here, we keep them off the road.
Commissioner Menzel, it's really a two-part question then. What's the solution to the daily traffic snarl for commuters? And what additional mass transit investment does Scott County need?
I think, I'm really a believer in park and rides. And Scott County, you know, they got that Danny Hecker building open, I'm hoping it reduces some traffic. I don't know if it really noticed it that much, but I thought it was up to 600 cars at its max. And, and then 21 and, and one they just opened out, 21 and 16, then one over there by Home Depot. So I really do think that's one of the solutions. And, you know, and I think a lot of people, I, I check those things different times. There's more and more people using those stuff than I thought that you could on a bus and put out down Minneapolis. This is why I actually have a mortgage or whatever, I don't have to work the cross river. And then I think in the, in the long run, I think, I mean, rail, not coming to Eden Prairie, I'm not sure exactly what that is, but I, to me, that's another answer. Otherwise, I'm going to tell you, to me, sometimes people just have to wait in line. They gotta wait, I mean, they gotta be patient. Everybody's always in a hurry from the cities, it seems like. And that's why people love to go off north, so they're more relaxed and just sit back and take their time.
Commissioner Marshall, then, it is a two-part question now. What is the solution to the daily traffic snarl for commuters? And what additional mass transit investment does Scott County need?
We have invested in transit significantly in the last few years, the continuation of the park and rides. We have our third major one now ready to go soon. The infrastructure improvements that we can make on the road with the idea that we design roads that keep traffic moving, that we don't have stop signs or interchanges that really interrupt the road traffic. And in our mass transit, if we can accommodate bus rapid lanes that keep the buses moving and also schedules that go to new and more destinations so that people who are not just going to downtown Minneapolis, but maybe St. Paul or the Bloomington area, have a way to get there. If they're not going to Minneapolis right now, they're really stuck unless they want to go to the Burnsville Station. And we missed the opportunity many years ago for rail and decided not to invest in that. And now the opportunity because of the cost is pretty well gone unless we really want to incur a lot of debt. Also, the river crossing that's been discussed repeatedly will be a significant investment. And who knows if it happens again.
Commissioner Wolf, what's the solution to the daily traffic snarl for commuters? And what additional mass transit investment does Scott County need?
10 years ago, if we'd have made a kind of a dream list of projects that we wanted to see happen, we wouldn't have put on the list as many things as we've got 494, 169, Highway 13, County Road 21, the 101 bridge that is soon to come, three park and rides, Blue Express bus service launched. We've removed bottlenecks everywhere we can, that's one of the big things is remove bottlenecks, that 494, 169 interchange, even though it wasn't, isn't in Scott County. We worked so hard, you would have thought it was in Scott County, and that's going to change everybody's life once that's completed this fall. And so we want to do that. What additional, we should have 169 designated as a transit way for bus rapid transit. We should have bus holders the whole way on, on, there's places there aren't bus holders. And so we need to develop that as a bus transit way.
Ms. Kachara, what is the solution to the daily traffic snarl for commuters? And what additional mass transit investment does Scott County need?
Other than staying home and not going to work, I think you're going to have to present people with options. Park and ride is wonderful that people can do that if they like to ride the bus. Personally, I am one of these people that if I'm going to be in the vehicle, I have to ride. And I don't agree to change that. But unfortunately, a, a solution is not tomorrow. Look how long it took the 494, 169. I had a chance to speak with Bill Kolmierowski, who occupied Commissioner 1 District for 32 years. I'm talking to him, you got the impression that he worked almost his entire tenure on getting the 169 bridge. So there's nothing that's going to be happening anytime soon. So my suggestion is we work very hard to find work, attract companies to work rather to build so we can have jobs within Scott County, people can stay home.
Well, roads have been mentioned repeatedly. What road projects do you think are, are priority for Scott County in the coming years? Ms. Lawrence, I'll begin with you.
There are two that I think are important. The first again would be working on the new bridge in Shakopee. It's very, very important getting that done. And I think we discussed all of that when we were talking about the traffic problems. The second one would be County Road 8, which begins in Cred River Township and extends over all the way to the past Highway 13. So Task Force Nuts is working on that now, we have a couple of roads that are working on that. The first part is going to be straightening that out. If you go into my district, from County Road 70 in Lakeville, and all of a sudden you hit that, goes downhill, it curves, there's going to be many accidents there. Getting that straightened out, we need some wider shoulders in that area. Because when people go off the road, they really go off the road and it becomes a very , very dangerous situation. I think the group that is working on County Road 8 is going to take care of the problem there and come up with some effective solutions to it. Safer to make vehicle traffic on that road. Thank you.
Commissioner Wagner.
I would, I would just echo what, what Mr. Lawrence just said. You know, County Road 8 wanders into my district 1 and a good part of it. And that is one meandering road. And it is, it's dangerous and et cetera. Long term, it would be nice if, if County Road 8 would at some point continue on and connect with 169 and Bell Plain. My own adamant is that it would be put back on the section lines where I think that the original rule of corridor preservation shouldn't be. It meanders off. That would be a wonderful, wonderful project to get the east-west connection for, for Scott County connected. Thank you.
Ms. Kachara.
Please repeat the question.
What road projects do you think are a priority for Scott County in the coming years?
Without getting into a, my district requires this versus your district. Bell Plain has a need for a bridge over 169 with County Road 3. It's perhaps the largest issue on the mind of the folks down that area. I grew up in Bell Plain. I can tell you, it is difficult to get from one side to the other unless you're willing to go. People do that in the cities, but you're asking folks to really go out of their way to get across. You have two towns essentially. The downtown seems to be, seems to be in trouble and I believe it is because the, the folks on the one side can't get over the, the bridge. And I, I've spoke with the county and they're, they're willing to, to talk to Bell Plain. And Bell Plain, leave the charge, they could get a bridge.
Commissioner Wolf.
Okay, I've got a list here. The 101 bridge, as I mentioned, get that out of the flooding, get that project going. Longer term, the river crossing at 41 and 169. Remove the bottleneck getting on 169. The bus holders along 169 are critical for the flood. I need the restriking of the bridge, we have pressure of federal highway, or bank, I suppose, federal highway to restrict the bridge so that entry lanes on it. Safety projects within Scott County, there's still some high fatality areas that we need to approve, the safety of crossings. And then even a new project, there's a safety fix needed at 101, 13, there's people who are north on 13 to 101 to go on 169, as in the morning, they, they're in a merge lane, they've got to cross a, you know, stop and go lane, a through lane that's 255 miles an hour, going, merging across to another stop and go lane. I talked to Menzel, he's not about this, and they're going to try and fix that, improvements for that safety issue. Very technical.
Commissioner Marshall.
Thank you. I'll also echo the 101 bridge, the funding and the reporting are challenges because not only it costs to commuters who waste time and gas trying to get to another area, but also the businesses who don't have the traffic coming to them. I'm going to talk about County Road 21 and downtown Prior Lake, it is a challenging area. We've worked with the city to find the best solution. There is no perfect solution because of the close proximity of Highway 13, which is the main avenue, which is where a lot of the downtown businesses are located. We worked and not to strengthen that intersection of Highway 13 and 21, but there are challenges because there are businesses located close up to the actual main section. And when we put that road in, the projection was that the road would last for about 10 years, it's a fast traffic within two. So we've never totally hit the mark 100% and therefore climbed accordingly.
Commissioner Menzel.
Well, 101 for sure is a, is a priority. And I think it was almost 10 years, you know, it never flooded. I think it was almost 10 years and it never flooded. And so people kind of forgot about it and all of a sudden flooded, I think, three times in, in two years. So that's definitely something we have to work on. But I also think it's very important that we take care of the roads we have, like say at busy intersections or whatever, and we put in right turn lanes, left turn lanes, and just improve the roads that we have. And also, one more thing I think is very important, and that's education. I really do believe that every four years when you get your driver's license, you should have to take maybe a two-hour course on, you know, how can we slow people down? How can we tell them that distractions like on your cell phone and texting and all that should be outlawed? Impair driving, you know, drink, don't drive. I really think that education is also so important. I really do see that as the answer for, for many things, including road safety.
Ms. Barber.
Going to echo some of the statements, especially about the 101 bridge, I do think that's critical. Also, I think the same thing applies to second river crossing. I think that's really important. It's not something, maybe it happens tomorrow, but it's certainly something we need to continue discussions on. There are a couple of other projects related to the district amendment that I think are important. And that would be Highway 16. Highway 16 is slated to be updated in 2019, I believe. And that really is the one highway besides 169 that connects the two areas of town. So South Bridge to the older Shakopee. May not seem like a big deal unless you're trying to come from work, cross 169 and then turn around and take your kids to soccer or hockey practice a little bit later. It is the one way. And right now, it's a more rural style road that has heavy traffic. The other thing is there's going to be a new high school built here in Shakopee at some point. And a number of the sites that they're looking at actually are tied to county roads. So there needs to be some discussion, so budgeting and funding for that can be timed in with when that will happen, to make sure that both the county, both the county and the city and the school district are all on the same page.
Commissioner Wolf.
I have quite a few, I think you just asked for two, but you could, we could look at Bell Plain and Jordan at crossings in both of those areas there. The 101 bridge is just an obvious. 8 is also obvious. 27 is one that we've been looking at, we're going to study, we're studying 8 at this point now. But another road is 13 where it meets up with 17, Marshall Road is, will be a through corridor road and at some point. And then 13 that goes to Prior Lake will probably become a county road at some point. And that may take some of the pressure off of 21 possibly. Other than that, that's the best, my list.
Well, as a follow up to all of you, and this then will be a 30-second question. And you may choose a yes, no answer to this that you'd like. Is Scott County getting its fair share of regional transportation dollars? And we're going to go back to Ms. Lawrence to begin.
I'll give a yes, no answer, then I'll explain in 30 seconds. I don't believe we are. I think we have a real problem in terms of metro dollars. I think you asked about metro dollars, you touched on that. We really need, need better representation in the Met Council, I'm sorry, I'm concerned. I know there's been talk about that before. And we have a representative out of Chaska, out of Carver County. But I think if we have better representation in terms of Met Council, I think if we're doing more lobbying in terms of St. Paul, possibly federal government, we have more dollars to take care of some of those problems.
Commissioner Wagner.
Well, obviously, I don't think we are. You know, it's one thing with the legislature that when it comes to rolling the, excuse me, gas tax dollars and everything else, the distributions on it, when it gets fraud out, the dangers come out quickly. But, you know, like I said, it's just, it's a dynamic in the state legislature. It's unfortunate, but no, we're not getting up to it. Thank you.
Ms. Kachara.
In the beginning of the last meeting, I mentioned, I'm always willing to admit I don't know everything, this is one of those times. I don't know the definitive answer to this. I can tell you, I'm unhappy with the Met Council, it's an appointee group, and I'm not sure what sway they have over the dollars we get. I am however happy with our current representative, Mr. Beerson in the audience, State Senator Robling, he's not here. He's done, I think, a wonderful job of being advocates. And I think part of the role of a county commissioner is to build those relationships with the state representatives, whether they're senators or representatives, so that when you show up and ask them for something, they know who you are. And that would be something.
Commissioner Wolf.
I would say up to about this point, we've gotten an amazing amount of money, we did quite well with the metropolitan area and federal one. I'm more concerned about the future. The Met Council plan really calls for low-cost, high-benefit approach to projects that are mostly within the 494, 494, 694 beltway. And they don't account for roads that would occur out in our region or anywhere outside of, or outside that beltway. So I'm really concerned for the future, but I think up to this point, we're dying to point about it.
Commissioner Marshall.
Thank you. I also think we have not been as successful as we could. Our legislators have been very supportive in many of our road initiatives and speaking for us at the legislature. But we can always improve that. And funding, there is always competition for whatever funds are available. And we've got to be at the table in order to make our case and continually get the funding sold. We're relying on our, our state marshals and officials to help with that.
Commissioner Menzel.
To me, sometimes it's amazing how much money we get for different roads. When you have people that apply, you always see the different money. You have also different parking rides and buses. And I can understand, you know, all the people in the metro area, comparing, we're paying sales tax or gas tax. But, you know, there's a lot of state highways outstate that have to be taken care of and there's only a small amount of people out there. Someone's got to pay the difference.
And I think, I can understand that we're not going to get all the tax, you know, that our citizens probably paid. But I can understand why some of it has to come from state also. So I understand when the legislators, they say, well, sorry, we have to take care of some of these roads also.
Ms. Barbara.
I somewhat echo Jerry's comments. It's somewhat hard to comment on that without some of the history. But having been at some of the Met Council listening sessions, I think that clearly there's been more of a focus on the inner corridor of the city from 494 and compared to out here. And as this area continues to grow, we will need a stronger representative. It was in those sessions, I got the understanding that that group will be redistricted in a couple of years. And it will be my wish to hopefully see a representative from Scott County on the Met Council, which hopefully can help advocate for us. I think they do a great job at the state level for us, but it would be also good to have that perspective at this point.
Ms. Wolf.
No, we're not getting all the money. I thought I heard a number at some point that was 35 cents on the dollar coming back. In fact, I think there's 6.5 billion dollars going to be spent in the next 15 or 20 years, something in the metro area. And 5.6 of that is going in the 494, 694 loop. And so that's where the priority is, and we're not getting our share.
This next question also will go to all of you. What do you think needs to be done to increase the quality of life for Scott County residents? We'll begin with Commissioner Marshall.
I think public health and public safety touch a lot of areas that people don't always think about. It's roads, construction, it's infrastructure, it is disease prevention. It is making sure that our communities are healthy, that they have the access to immunizations or healthcare when they need it. So when we talk, we're also the Public Health Board for the county. County Board is also the Public Health Board. And I sit on the State Advisory Committee for the state health. We talk about a lot of things, and it's not just diseases, it's not just immunizations. It's the environmental impact of some of the decisions we make. It is the pollution, it is disease, it is prevention. So if we are aware of what the community needs, and we do our assessments every two years, to really ask the community, what do we need? And to provide for you to be healthy and really take their input.
Ms. Mendez.
Well, I, I'll tell you, this is the way I say it. I'm not making Shakopee bigger. I grew up in Scott, I raised my kids here. And I don't want any more people in Shakopee, worse Scott County. And I know a lot of times I hear people say, well, jeez, if Shakopee isn't 75,000 in five years, we failed. And so much of it's on quantity, not quality. And I think we should be focusing on the quality. How can we make this a safer place to live in Shakopee? How can we get neighbors and old neighbors? How can we, you know, make it a healthier place? How can we get people to exercise? And how do we address the problems that we have today, like the heroin and meth and prescription drug type things? I mean, those are some of the things that improve the quality, not necessarily the quantity. To me, bigger is...
Ms. Barbara.
Well, I would say, first of all, some of us who moved here have done some great things to help out our community. So I think moving to Shakopee was a great thing. We moved here for many good reasons. And part of it is because it is a very nice community. It has the festival, small town, and access to the state. There's a lot of people that need improvement too. Now, as far as ways to improve the quality of life, I think it's really key to focus on the actual goals of the county. The county goal right now, the stated goal, is safe, healthy, livable communities. That's what we need to do. Public safety, that's in the form of public moving services, that's in the form of Sheriff's Department, that's in the form of improving roads. Healthy, again, goes back to some of the community health issues. And also parks and things like that. Livable, again, goes to parks and libraries. Now, some of these things are the benefits. About 80% of what the county does is mandated. But there is that 20% of things that we can do to make this a better place to live. And it's focusing on that little area, figuring out what we need and what each individual community needs to be the best that can be.
Ms. Wolf. Can you repeat the question? What do you think needs to be done to increase the quality of life for Scott County residents?
One thing I hear of a lot is taxes are too high. And that's not just the county, but the, you know, schools, the townships, the cities, whatever. Roads could be improved, limiting government and rules, getting to get things done around here. You know, it just seems like it takes quite a while to get permit or the ability to put a building in. It's months and months, whereas some places it's, you know, weeks. People love parks here in Scott County, and they also like their libraries. And so I would hear the parks, we just on Saturday opened one up here, Spring Lake Park, real nice park. And in fact, we opened a library up in, I remember it was May, they showed up in the open market. Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence.
Quality of life encompasses so many things. If you ask 10 people what they felt were important to quality of life, you'd probably get 10 different answers. But I'll give you a few that I think are important. Public safety comes to mind. Law enforcement is very, very important. I understand at times there's only two deputies on duty in Scott County. East Deputy, West Deputy, Sheriff will remind me afterwards if I'm wrong. I think the work being done in that task force is very, very important. Human services, as our population starts to grow older, I know that myself, that there gets to be more need for the things that human services provide in Scott County. And also the parks. I think the opening of Spring Lake Park is great. The position of land, Cedar Lake, for Cedar Lake was important because it was there. You only got one chance to grab it. I'll give you an example. I lived next to Murphy Hammerhand Park. We have two actually in my district, Murphy Hammerhand and Clear. Somebody had the insight in the early 70s to condemn that land, to get those two parks on the tax rolls or off the tax rolls and into the hands of the county to develop. And they're both great. Thank you.
Ms. Wagner.
Well, you know, for standard, you know, the parks, you know, public safety. I would, Mr. Lawrence, that I know with myself representing, you know, seven townships and, I believe, on any given evening, I mean, our sheriff's Nick corrected, but I think there's like two deputies, and it's a lot of land area. And, but the other thing really is, I always look at that, that human service is part of it. And it may speed if you're in director, you start dealing with a lot of elderly people and issues. And public health services, get these people so that they can live in their homes as long as they can see what we can. I think that, to me, that's one of the most important things. I know parks are, libraries are, but that is really the human aspect of Scott County.
Ms. Chair.
Two deputies doesn't seem like a help, does it, Sheriff? I would advocate for if we're here living, want safe, livable communities, well, let's keep our eye on course and make that happen. I am also sure quality of life is very different if you have a job or you don't have a job. If you lose your house or you're secured in your home. We can help people by helping attract good-paying jobs to this county by making it easy for businesses to come. So people are upside down in mortgages, which would happen as a matter of equation. If more people move in, the housing market will improve. If you have a job, you're not as concerned about losing your home. Quality of life would improve if we were able to help people find economic freedom by giving them secure, good-paying jobs close to their home.
Ms. O'Leary.
Well, we've had great success in this area. Over the short term, we've had two libraries, two parks. We launched Fish, that could be a human need, that has the quality of life. We improve public safety with building a training center. We built a jail in jail. We're reducing congestion, bottlenecks, and building, I think my order is set, parking rides. So all of these are ways to improve the quality of life. And we do this within a conservative approach. We don't go spending wildly, because, you know, we had amazing results. We opened two parks recently, and we only have two parks stacked. We only have two people stacked. So we've really done a great job in a partnership with Three Rivers. And, but, so those kinds of things are options I look for in the future, those, that nature.
Our last question before your closing statements this evening comes from actually a student at Shakopee High School who asked that question in this very room. And because of the time constraints, I'm going to ask you to keep your answers to 30 seconds. Do you support individual property owners installing windmills for power generation on their property? And Commissioner Wolf will begin with you.
It's already happening and out in my district. And I do support them. You know, I don't know if it's the wave of the future or what it is, but as long as they have proper setbacks for property lines and other structures, fine.
Ms. Barbara.
I echo that. As long as it's within the guidelines that are out there, it's not something I think that we have a rule to stop. And as long as you're following the proper requirements, it's something that can make sense. And I think it's probably something we're likely to see more of.
Ms. Mendez.
Well, the last couple of planning and zoning meetings was discussed. We discussed it in open meeting. Townships had a chance to discuss it because of different people that are applying. Some people don't like it, it's a two-and-a-half acre plot, you know, and it's noise and all that. But, you know, same time, they don't want to curtail any type of energy, whether it's wind or whatever. And so right now it's up in the air, and I'm not sure what the answer is.
Ms. Marshall.
Thank you. I get comments sometimes from people who refer to individual and property rights, and that government sometimes is instrumental in trying to take away our rights. And there are times when really we need to pay attention to those individual and property rights. As far as the safety goes, if it is a safe area and if it needs setbacks, and if they should come down for some reason, it's not going to impact the safety of the people on that property or neighbors, then they should be fine.
Ms. O'Leary.
I kind of feel that these may only be suited where there's larger acreage, you know, the townships. You know, there's the right sort of person that wants the windmill, but there's also the person that lives next door. So I want to make sure there's some acreage separating the properties so they can work together. So I don't see them as candidates for a more urbanized part of the county.
I have some concerns aesthetically. If you've been to an area that is peppered or dotted, whatever phrase you want to use, with windmills, it can take your breath away, which isn't a great of a pun as Mr. Mendez had, but I... And yet, I am concerned about property rights for those who want to use them. But I'm also concerned for property rights of those who don't want to look at it.
Ms. Wagner.
I think it's, again, it boils down, it coils down to property rights, what people can do and what the neighbors, whatever. And I really do think that, you know, the cities need to have some open houses, get a lot of input. Scott County, the zoning planning needs to get some input. And then you're going to have to set up some rules, because that's the only way. But this can be, this can, one of these things can turn into a real hot-button issue. But you got to iron it out before you get any more requests on clear out what the rules are.
Ms. Lawrence.
Overall, I would say yes. Of course, there has to be situations looked at in terms of setbacks. If that windmill were to go down or fall on the property that the property owner has. But energy conservation is important. We hear so much about generation, whether it be wind, whether it be solar. Another board I sit on that actually is an energy provider, we talk about electricity increasing possibly 5% per year for the next couple of years. And so therefore, I would say that generation is important, but not its importance.
Well, our time is running out. Anyone whose questions have not been answered this evening should take an opportunity to ask the candidates this evening after the debate or by contacting their campaigns. Each candidate will now have one minute to make a closing statement, and we will begin with Commissioner O'Leary.
I just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve as a Scott County Commissioner. I guess it's an honor for me. I take the job very seriously. I look hard at it. I put my full self effort into it. And it's very rep, I enjoy it. I want to let you know that I'm always available to anyone that has a concern, no matter where you live within Scott County. I've always viewed myself as a Scott County Commissioner, representing the whole county, not just the area that elects me. I want to tell you that I also will always be looking for ways to do things differently. Do developments differently, provide services more efficiently, collaborate further together. That's why we develop scale and Fish. They're a brother and sister organization. Both have a goal to provide something, whether it be capital of government or human need. Do that, each one in a more efficient way, by part of each other. So those are kind of perspectives that I have. And I just thank you again for your support in the last meeting on the county.
Ms. Marshall.
Thank you. I also want to take the opportunity to thank who we're in for this opportunity tonight. It's been an honor, truly an honor, to serve the residents of Scott County for the past years. For over 30 years, I've lived or worked in either Shakopee or Pryor Lake. I know the citizens. I regularly meet with them to get their input on the issues, to understand their viewpoint. So I have a network of people that I look to for input. I have knowledge experience and understanding of county government. I serve on about 25 committees with great variety, criminal justice, community corrections, libraries, legislation, public health, emergency services. And I'm the rep to the Association of Counties. So I not only work here within our local jurisdictions, but regional committees and the state of Minnesota. I look at the facts, fairness, and common sense when I make decisions. And I'm very committed to the future and to looking for the best solutions to the issues that come before us.
Ms. Mendez.
To me, I'm just going to read something here, but I'm going to say, government is getting too big. We have too many entitlements. We spend too much money. You know, and there's different studies you see where, you know, one is that less than 30% of the people, you know, have faith in our government. I feel that's the elected official's problem, meaning something. I just want to read this, so I'm Chuck Fuller, I get this paper up north. He says, "You cannot legislate forward to prosperity by legislating the wealthy out of prosperity. What one person receives without working for another person must work for without receiving. The government cannot give to anybody anything that the government does not first take from someone else. You cannot multiply wealth by dividing it. When half of the people get the idea that they do not have to work because the other half is going to take care of them, and when the other half gets the idea that it does no good to work because somebody else is going to get what they worked for, that is the beginning of the end of any nation. It's not too late to change." And I think that's up to us as elected officials.
Ms. Barbara.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come here tonight. It's been a very engaging forum. Really interesting to hear what everybody has to say. I think I am a good fit for the Scott County Board. I have a background in business. I've been a self-employed for many years. Actually have leveraged that into an additional partnership. Have a background in engineering, and my specialty in my work is strategic planning, project management. I'm used to working in collaborative environments to create efficiencies, make sure redundancies are reduced, looking at budgets, looking at resources. How can we do things better, taking really complex problems and making them more simple? And I think that's something I do very well, and I think would be a good addition to the county.
Ms. Wolf.
Well, I think it's about service and serving, and I've been dedicated and responsive to this job for the last four years. I've been involved in numerous organizations from Lyons, Casey's, Chamber. I go to nearly every single one out of all the meetings I have that I'm on committees on. I think I've missed three, and that's because I had other meetings to go to. At one time, I was actually in South Dakota. But I love the job, and I would like to continue. Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence.
My father always said, "Stop complaining, take action." And that's what I'm doing running for the Scott County Board. I've learned a great deal the last five years, as a river board, as chairperson the last two years. I'm listening, talking less, listening to what constituents have to say. Lived in the district for 23 years. My small business is in the district 23 years, but I also spent 23 years, surprisingly, with a Fortune 500 company where myself and my management group were responsible for a revenue budget of over $100 million a year. So I understand budgeting, both coming in and going out. I'm not looking for a job. If I was, I'd be contacting Mr. Kimmy at Scott County Human Resources. But if you want someone that displays honesty and integrity, I'm the person for the position, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Ms. Wagner.
I take the job being Commissioner seriously. I do. I came from a family of 10. For the most part, we're all pretty much around in the area. I married into a family of 11, pretty much all around in District 1 also. My business is here. And again, people call me, I go to their house, I go to their farm. I talk with them with their issues because representing the seven townships, as you know, the county is the land use authority, which is huge. If somebody wants to come in and they want to build their garage, and they don't make the setback, and they want to variance, anything like that, I get the Scott County official, building official, zoning official, drive over to their house, I sit down with them, a lot of times right at their kitchen table, and you try to work it out. Unfortunately, most of the time, the answer is still no, but I'm there for the people I represent. I think I do a good job, and I'd like to continue. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Born and raised in Bell Plain. Lived in this area for 50 of my 53 years. Lauren raised Belt Plain. Lived in this area for 50 of my 53 years. First couple of years ago, I think we majored in speaking, living in Ennis and Ramsey County. I ask for this role, and I would take this job very seriously. I would treat it as a full-time job. I would pour myself into it. My office is three blocks of the Scott County Government Center, which makes it very convenient for me to go down there and handle the problem that most certainly will come up. And I'm keenly aware that I would be representing seven townships. But in addition to that, the city's in Belt Plain, Jordan, Newbury, and now part of Shakopee. And they would get their money's worth. Because I would be there at every opportunity representing them. I thank you for this time, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Once again, I'd remind you that the views expressed this evening are those of the candidates, not of the Chamber and Visitors Bureau or the Shakopee Public Schools. Sponsorship of this debate does not represent an endorsement by the Chamber or the schools of any particular candidate. We'd like to thank the audience this evening. We'd like to say thank you to our hosts, the Shakopee Public Schools, and to the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau. Thank you also to our candidates for serving our community by participating in the democratic process and running for office. Remember that Election Day is Tuesday, November 6. Please vote. Thank you, and good evening.